Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the meeting of the Portsmouth City Council. Council members, please stand for a moment of silence and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, welcome, everyone. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
President.
Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
President.
Mr. Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here. Members of council, we have for our consideration the minutes of a call meeting on September 28th, '21, 2021, and of a regular meeting on September 28th, 2021. Is there any discussion of the minutes? Seeing none, are we in need of a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. Madam Clerk, please read our speaker's statement.
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have now come to the item on our agenda of public hearing, item 21-303, AZ21-05. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the agenda item that we, in resolution, we're considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. Ordinance granting the request of Edward E. O'Brien for rezoning of approximately .139 acre property at 441 Washington Street from historic limited office to historic limited business. The future land use map of the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed-use downtown. The property is owned by 441 Washington Street LLC. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions. The, we have zoning amendment ordinance, Z2105.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Is the applicant present?
Mayor Glover.
Welcome, sir.
Good to see you. My name is Brian Plumley. I'm with the Poole Law Firm. Our office address is 200 High Street, Suite 302, Town Bank Building, and we represent Mr. O'Brien in 441. Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, thank you very much for this opportunity to address you. I'd leave very brief. We first want to thank the staff for their hard work in this matter and their recommendation. The staff has said that this is the type of development contemplated in the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan and by the Downtown Design Overlay District. We certainly welcome the six oh unanimous vote of the Planning Commission last month, and rather than belabor the point, we think it meets the requirements of the city code. We think it's going to be a fine opportunity for the city business-wise, and we hope very much for your approval. I'm here to answer more questions if you have any. The applicant is also here to answer any specific questions that you may have. We have the letters of support of many organizations. We have the monumental United Methodist Church, St. John's Church, St. John's School, Old Town Business Association with its 80 members, the Portsmouth Civic League Board wrote a letter in recommendation, Portsmouth Jazz Experience, and several other businesses have submitted letters of support, and we ask very much for your approval.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any registered speakers, Madam Clerk?
Not on this item, sir, no.
Thank you, ma'am. Since this is a public hearing, are there any speakers from the audience who wish to come up and speak at this time on this public hearing? Please come forward and state your name and address. Please state your name and address, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Katrina Smith, and the topic that I wanted to speak on today was the gun violence.
Well, ma'am, we're, right now, we're in a public hearing, so the issue or the matter you have to speak on is this specific public hearing?
This specific topic?
Right. You may have signed up on the speakers, or when we have our non-agenda speakers, you'll have a time to come up for that.
Okay, this is my first.
That's okay.
Okay.
I appreciate, and we appreciate, you coming forward to speak.
Yes.
Just hang, hang, hang in there, and we'll get to you.
Yes, I sure will.
Thank you very much. Once again, this is a public hearing on this matter. If there's anyone who's willing or who wants to come before council and speak on this particular matter. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Members of City Council, is there any discussion? Councilmember Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, ma'am. I just want to know what would be the daily operations for this particular historical site on Sundays, being that the churches are supportive of this, this project.
Sir, would you please come forward?
Thank you very much for your question, Councilman Woodard. There will be no operation on Sundays of this. The churches are going to be using the parking facilities during that time, clearly, and will be, the business will be renting the spaces from the churches during its operational time during the rest of the week. I hope that helps you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Was there any feedback from the community? Did anybody speak at the Planning Commission meeting regarding this?
We did not have any opposition during the Planning Commission. There was one letter from a Planning Commissioner who did not attend, who had been a member of the Old Point Civic League, but then he didn't oppose it, and I think was satisfied ultimately with the recommendation of the Planning Commission. We do have supporters here. If I could ask folks that came in support of the project who didn't want to sign up to speak but are here to show their support to the applicant, I wanted you to note their presence.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Seeing no other questions from my colleagues on council, Madam Clerk, we are in need of a motion and a second?
Move adoption.
Second.
And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. And Madam Clerk, we have now come to item B, UP-21-20, excuse me, 21-13. And would you please read the agenda item and resolution we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. Resolution granting the request of Edward E. O'Brien for a use permit for an entertainment establishment on the approximately .139 acre property at 441 Washington Street in the historic limited office zoning district. The future land use map of the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed-use downtown. The property is owned by 441 Washington Street LLC. The Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions.
Thank you, ma'am.
And if I, I'm sorry, if I could read the resolution, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
A resolution granting a use permit for UP2113 to Edward E. O'Brien to operate an entertainment establishment at 441 Washington Street, tax parcel 12-841.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Is the applicant present?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council folks, again, Brian Plumley here for Ed O'Brien, LLC, the 441 LLC. The staff worked really hard to put together this list of conditions, which our client adopts and accepts in full as part of the use permit necessary to operate the facility that's now been rezoned by you just moments ago, and we very much appreciate your reviewing this matter and ask for your approval.
Thank you, sir. Once again, because this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who would like to come before council and speak on this specific public hearing? Seeing none, then this public hearing is closed. Members of council, is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for approval.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. We've now come to item C, UP-21-14. And Madam Clerk, please read the agenda item and resolution we are considering pertaining to this item.
Yes, sir. Resolution granting the request of Adams Outdoor Advertising for a use permit to update and convert an existing back-to-back static billboard into a portion, excuse me, I'm sorry, into a back-to-back digital billboard of the same size and placement, 14 by 48 feet, on a portion of .68 acre lot located at 5720 High Street in the general mixed-use zoning district. The future land use map of the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates the property as commercial. The property is owned by Town Bank. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions.
Thank you, ma'am. Is the applicant present? Sir, you have 10 minutes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor Glover, and members of City Council. For the record, my name's Steve Romine with an office at 999 Waterside Drive, Norfolk. I represent Adams Outdoor Advertising in this use permit request, UP2114. Want to thank Carl Jackson for his assistance in developing the application. I have with me today the applicant's representative as well. I'll be very brief, because the staff report is pretty complete. Adams desires and wishes to update and convert an existing back-to-back static billboard sign into a back-to-back digital billboard sign of the same size and placement, it's approximately 14 feet by 48 feet, at the Town Bank property at 5720 High Street, and I think the pictures are up on the slide. The sign is situated on a .68 acre parcel zone GMU, which is utilized by the bank for storage in a one-story building. The area is in a commercial corridor. Zoning ordinance section 42, 40.2-533 permits the modification of an outdoor advertising sign, including the conversion to an LED electronic display. The digital display will meet the requirements of the zoning code with respect to changeability and illumination. Adams will maintain the sign. The staff report concludes that this application will not have an adverse impact on surrounding properties. It also states that the application is consistent with the goals of the Comprehensive Plan. Staff report recommends approval based on its valuation, determination of compliance with the city codes. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval 6-0, and the six conditions contained in the staff report are acceptable to the applicant. For these reasons, I ask that you approve UP2114, and I'll stand by for questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romine. Is there anyone in the audience who didn't have an opportunity to register for this public hearing and wished to speak at this time? Seeing none, then this public hearing is closed. Members of City Council, are there any discussions on this item? Seeing none, we are in need of a motion and second.
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. We have now come to item D, CA-21-03. And Madam Clerk, please read the agenda item and ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item.
Yes, sir. Ordinance granting the request of the City of Portsmouth to amend City Code Chapter 40.2 zoning ordinance to exist, exempt existing structures in the downtown D1 district from the minimum required density to amend the maximum permitted height for new construction in HR, HLO, and HLB to add the event space banquet hall use, to remove garage sale, residential sale accessory use, to amend the use designation of several uses in the use table, to amend table 40.2-304 to buffer-type application of the landscaping subsection to exempt townhouse residential development from the open space setback requirement, excuse me, set-aside requirement, to allow ground signs in the UR, URM zoning districts to remove the common ownership subdivision requirement in the nonconformities subsection, and to correct scriver's, scribe-ner's errors throughout zoning ordinance. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions, and the ordinance itself reads an ordinance to amend Chapter 40.2 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, pertaining to zoning for the purpose of addressing various density, height, use, landscaping, open space, and signage requirements, and to correct scribe-ner's errors.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Baldwin, sir, you may present this item.
Thank you, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Barnes, members of City Council. I know that was kind of a lot for the city clerk to read, but I'm going to walk you through all these changes. These are what we would consider pretty minor overall. As you know, we have a new zoning ordinance, went into effect in February, and one of the things we have indicated to City Council, we'll do is continue to work to keep the ordinance as simple and straightforward and easy to use as we can, to try to keep it updated, and when we come across things where we think we can make things better, eliminate confusion, things that come up from the public using the ordinance, staff using the ordinance, we want to come forward and go ahead and change those. So, we have a handful of those today. I'll walk you through them. If you have any questions about any of these things, feel free to ask, and we'll just kind of walk through them one at a time. We'll start off with this first one. This is our one about conversions of existing structures. As I think you're aware, in our downtown district, we have a minimum and maximum zoning. Somebody comes in to build a new multifamily building. However, those numbers don't work well on converting an existing building. Historically, that's been interpreted, that it doesn't apply, and that, you know, whatever you can get kind of out of that structure is an acceptable number. But there's always some question whether that's the best way to do zoning practice. So, we just want to clarify that for the users of the ordinance to know. If you go to convert, say, an existing building to residential, you're exempt from those density standards, since we know in our existing buildings, you cannot reach them. Those are really intended for new construction. Okay, second item here. This is a very simple one. This is dealing with our historic districts. We originally in the zoning ordinance listed height, maximum height for buildings by a particular number, but we know these historic structures are, especially in different districts, have different heights. So, rather than do it by number, we decided to do it by the number of stories, and so you can see, we're going to say from, say, in Truxton, from a 20-foot tall building to a two-story structure. This is really in alignment with the design guidelines work, and we're just trying to clarify that, so people know I can do a two-story structure, I can do a three-story structure, and, and the rest of that, they have to go through the Historic Preservation Commission, obviously, to get the design approved, and so we think that's the way you keep those straight. Next amendment. This one really goes along with the item you just had earlier tonight, your use permit in Old Town. We've had two of these this year since the new ordinance went into effect. This would not have mattered even under the old ordinance. We don't believe these sort of event and banquet spaces are exactly the same as an entertainment establishment, although it's historically been interpreted the same way under the zoning code, just to use that same section. So, you think of comparing what was just proposed to you tonight, for example, to, say, where Roger Brown's operates, or, you know, more of a restaurant nightclub that's full-time operated as an entertainment establishment. So, this is allowing the same uses in the same districts, there's no real change. We're just trying to clarify, when somebody comes in and says, "I want to do a banquet hall or an event space," there's no confusion as to how the zoning ordinance will, will interpret what that use is, as opposed to saying, "Well, I think that might be an entertainment establishment, let's, let's take a look at it." So, this really simplifies the process. It puts people in the same use permit process. There's no change to the districts or uses, it just clarifies that as a separate type of use. Next item. Garage sales. This is already regulated by Chapter 18 of the city code. One that we've tried to do is not double-regulate, triple-regulate from other places of the code. People already have to go to the Commissioner of Revenue to get a permit. This is really not, these one- or two-day events are really not typical zoning items, and so we're just removing this, we're recommending to remove this from the zoning ordinance and leave it to Chapter 18 of the city code. Next item here. This item here, this represents really an error that was made when the use table was finalized for adoption in the last year. The two uses we have, dealing with religious institutions and our general mixed-use district and historic residential, those were permitted in the 2010 ordinance that we were amending. They were accidentally dropped from the use table, and this is just putting the use table back together the way it was under 2010. And these are appropriate uses in the district, and by removing them, we'd be creating a number of nonconforming uses in some of these districts, which you certainly do not want to be creating nonconformities. So, this is basically just fixing an error in the use table. It's crematory. I think people are probably aware that we have funeral homes, we have crematories, we have funeral homes with crematories. What this is basically doing is treating them the same. So, where a funeral home can have a crematory, then we have a separate section, thanks for crematory. We think because they're really one of the same kind of, of an operation, just to put these under a single set of regulations, so the crematory is clear where it's permitted. We have, we don't have many of these. We have one in Portsmouth Boulevard at Sturdivance, there's a crematory across the street from the funeral home. They operate, they have meeting rooms similar to what you might see at a funeral home over there. This is just to simplify in the ordinance, so there's, you know, clarity and consistency across those two uses. Here's another of those odd things in the use table. For some reason, the most, our heavy industrial district did not allow communication towers in it, which seems like the place you'd most want them to go, and we're just recommending we put that back in with the use permit in the heavy industrial district. Okay, this is dealing with townhouse density. Under the prior code, we did not have lot sizes for single, for townhouses that are being sold as individual lots, and that was causing a lot of trouble with developers and getting through the subdivision processes, there were no standards to review lots when they go to subdivide the property. So, in the 2020 ordinance, so the 2021 ordinance, townhouse lots now have standard lot sizes, and by having standard lot size, you no longer need to regulate them by using a density standard, you just go by the lot size, and it's a much more simple way for townhouse developers, and it certainly is easier when they go to subdivide the property. Here's another one of those kind of confusing things from zoning for people. So, we have a way to calculate in the zoning ordinance, we round numbers up, for example, for parking. So, if you're in a single-family situation, in our code, as it says today, you did 1.5 parking spaces per unit, we tell you that's two, because we don't do a half a parking space. It should have been two in the first place. People come in and say, "Why, why does it say that?" We say, "'Cause that's just confusing." And we're just going to make it two, as it has always been. So, it'd be two park, two parking spaces per dwelling unit on any single-family detached structure, and that's just been the way it's been with the city code, and I would just call that more of a, of an error in making sure that it's clear and simple what the number's supposed to be. A lot of times, we'll use that one and a half if you're doing multifamily, because you're doing a larger calculation of parking. This is just correcting this table. I won't go through all the details on it, but you can see the, underwear says proposed use type, there's a heading up there that says existing zoning on a budding land. However, in the 2021 code, what is below that does not have anything to do with the zoning. It starts describing land uses, and so the proposal here is to take those headings out. For example, it says single-family residential, and putting the zoning districts that were intended to be there in the first place. That's what the table is supposed to be called. So, now, when it says existing zoning, you can look and see what the zoning district is that it's referring to. This is another sign situation. We continue to work on our signs, these ground signs. This one, for one, for some reason, this one district on ground sign did not permit that in the UR and URM district. That was really more of an oversight, and we're just correcting the table to make it Back to our townhouse situation. Again, we're talking about lots, townhouses on individual lots, and we're not talking about, you know, a multifamily project that has townhouse-style units. Current zoning ordinance requires a 10% open space set aside. It's almost impossible to do when everyone has an individual lot. This almost forces the creation of, of empty open land and a homeowners' association to maintain it. It's really not a good situation, since everyone has their own lot, they typically are, so this just eliminates that requirement on a townhouse subdivision, that they have an additional 10%, open space set aside for the subdivision. This is something I'll try to give you the quick explanation of, and I'm going to have you go down and take a look at that item B, that's, we got the overstrike in it, and it says, "If a nonconforming lot of record has at any time since April 25th, 1961, been in common ownership with any contiguous lot on the same existing proposed right-of-way, such lots shall be consolidated." Well, you can imagine, having the same property owner that we could trace back to 1961 is just a mess, and so that just needs to be deleted. There's no way to track people's ownership back for 60 years and say, "If at any time during the last 60 years, you owned the lot next to you," we're going to treat that as one lot, which is what that's, that whole section is trying to tell you, that we go all the way back to 1961. If you own two lots side by side at any time in that last 60 years, we go back there. We know there might be 10 different property owners since then, and property might have been sold. It's just not a good piece of zoning, and it's also zoning that's regulating people, not land, and we typically try to avoid regulating based on owners or people, so that's just a recommendation to delete that. We, we don't really apply it, because it's almost impossible to track, track it all the way back, anyway. It just has been carried. I will tell you, this is not an uncommon thing. I've seen it in other zoning ordinances in other localities, and they all have the same exact problem with it. This is a front of lot, front yard definition. This really gets into subdividing property, and a lot of times, we try to figure out, what's the front, what's the side? Pretty straightforward under residential. If you have, for example, a corner lot, whichever side is shortest is the front. However, a lot of times, you get into industrial property, commercial property, those lot rules don't really work, and what this just provides is an alternative, that if you've got commercial or industrial property, what other prevailing lot frontage is, you can use as your front. So, whatever everybody else is using as your front, you can call your front. That's the best way to describe what that says. Instead of saying, "Sorry, that's your short side, we don't care what it else looks like, you make that your front." So... And then the last, and we just have a few, and these are just mostly minor terminology changes that are being switched in the code that have really no substantive thing. Back to the scrivener's errors, it's the same situation. Scrivener's errors would be typos, things of that nature, that were allowed by, under law, to just change without going through City Council, because they're not really substantive part, and if we, if a word is misspelled, we just want to make you aware, there's some smaller tweaks in there that need to be done, and we'll be fixing these scrivener errors as we find them. And fortunately, there haven't been that many, but there, you can imagine, in a document of that size, that's been, that's gone through a complete rewrite process. We're going to come across things in there where, and we've had, as you may have been aware, as we moved towards adoption, at the end, we had multiple versions we would bring out public, for public comment. So, over the course of time, there are, you know, changes and updates. We tried to catch all of those things before adoption, but where we find them, we like to get those correct. And that was kind of a quick run-through there. Hope that was helpful. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have on any of those, in those changes.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Just, just one question, Mr. Baldwin. As far as the communities that you had limitations as far as the stories?
Mm-hmm.
How do you determine which communities have what maximum stories?
Okay, that's all, first of all, that's all come from the historic carryover of the zoning from the first time those historic districts were created, and then we also used the design guidelines that were developed that apply in those different, those are all historic districts. And so, in each one of those, that's already been sort of predetermined what the height of the buildings are, predominant heights of the buildings, and so when somebody's going to build something new in one of those neighborhoods, the goal is to be, you know, compatible and consistent with the prevailing land pattern in those neighborhoods, so that's where that came from. That's why you'll see, you know, a two-story building in Truxton, with a three-story building in Old Town. I think you can see the difference if you walk through the two neighborhoods. There's a difference in the heights of the buildings, and that's how that comes about.
Does that pertain to commercial versus residential or both?
It would apply to all.
Oh, okay.
But all subject going through the Historic Preservation Commission for approval to make sure they're consistent with the design guidelines.
That wouldn't impact surrounding property value?
No.
No question. Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Baldwin, for your hard work on this. And I know that it's tedious work, but if there are any other oversights or errors when we go to approve use permits or other options, are we able to address them one-on-one, or will we have to go back to this process?
Right. If you're amending the ordinance itself, there's a couple ways. As you know, there's another code amendment right behind this one. You can see that's a one-type of a code amendment. And that's more, what we consider a more significant change. Most of the time, if there's going to be a code amendment, the law requires you go through public hearing, go through the Planning Commission, city council. Typically speaking, the planning department works through the Planning Commission. We meet with them, you know, monthly on these things. I just remind you, city council also has the authority to initiate code changes. If council would want to take it, usually what we have council do is advise staff they would like to see the code changed, and we'd go back and work through the Planning Commission for that, just to keep the process a little more straightforward, I guess, and overall. But the, I'm not sure every council member understands that under the way the code is structured in Virginia, the staff cannot initiate code amendments. They have to either initiate it by the Planning Commission or city councils. We would have to take them to one of those two bodies and ask them to initiate the process for us to work on the code amendments and bring those forward. So if we were to come across something in an application, back to your question.
Right.
If you identified something, we would go back, we give it to the Planning Commission, we initiate a process and go back through the code amendment process.
Right.
And we try to do these smaller ones in a larger group. And just to give you like a heads-up, we have, the General Assembly will be meeting later this year. That's typically where you'll start to see code amendments. The General Assembly has a knack of modifying zoning.
Right.
For a number of years, we were doing conditional zoning every year, for example. So depending on what they do in this upcoming session, we will likely have to come back and do some code amendments in addition to whatever we might decide or find, or council might find, or whoever, to make sure we're compliant with any changes the General Assembly makes to our zoning-enabling legislation.
All right. Thank you. I know it was a lengthy document, so I applaud you and your staff on the efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we need to also let everyone know, this is still a public hearing. So if there are any other speakers that wish to come forward on this particular public hearing, you have the opportunity to do that now. Seeing none, then this public hearing is closed. We are in need of a motion and a second.
For adoption.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Ms. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item E, CA-21-04. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the agenda item and ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. Ordinance granting the request of the City of Portsmouth to amend City Code Chapter 40.2 zoning ordinance to require a use permit for car wash or auto detailing use in all districts that allow this use, including neighborhood, mixed-use, general mixed-use, light industrial, industrial, and historic limited business. The City of Portsmouth proposes to amend the use-specific standards for the car wash and auto detailing use to ensure the use is compatible with the surrounding, with their surroundings. The Planning Commission recommends approval, and the actual ordinance is an ordinance to amend Chapter 40.2 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, pertaining to zoning for the purpose of requiring a use permit for the car wash or auto detailing use in all districts that allow the use and amending the applicable use-specific standards.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
Mr. Baldwin, you may proceed.
Thank you. And good evening again, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Barnes, members of city council. I think this is a topic many council members have been discussing. I know this was brought to me via the city manager. And then we then, as we just described before, went through the Planning Commission to look at doing a code amendment. With the number of car washes that have been either built, or I think people are hearing rumors about, there's some concern about where they're going, are they in the right place, how to control these things. Up till now, these are permitted by right uses. We just have our use-specific standards we apply when someone goes through the site plan process. However, to move that off of that, it's been proposed based on what's been provided to us to change those zoning districts, which is a permitted-by-right use, to make them get use permits in all of those districts. And so you can see that on the bottom of that chart there. We see the "use" with the lines under them, and that's basically moving that from the permitted use above to make these all use permits. So across the city, car washes would require use permits, whatever district they're permitted in. In addition to that, we, having looked at a couple that's been built, proposed a couple modifications to the standards we apply. Most of those have to do with screening. For example, where you have those large vacuum cleaner bays, and you might have equipment on the end that have some landscaping screening on the end of the equipment, stuff on the equipment. And we've had a couple of these where we've had some concerns about the car washes being right in front of someone's house or across the street from someone's house. So we have just some, and these would apply to everyone across the board. In addition to, for example, city council would approve a use permit with conditions. Any additional conditions, city council will apply on each individual application that come before you. And obviously, because it's a use permit, council would always have the option to deny the application. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Councilmember Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. When you say "everyone across the board," you're just referring to auto detailing, but also car wash and hand car washes as well?
That would apply. There are restrictions on hand car washes already in city code. They're not covered in zoning. They're under stormwater. They're already very difficult for anyone to establish a new hand car wash where they're not doing proper stormwater management. You're not supposed to be just flushing, you know, car wash detergents, things, for example, into the street. We know people do that. But the point would be, if you're setting that up as a business, the same treatment would need to be applied for the stormwater requirements. So that would require use, we would propose that, require a use permit, because it's in the same definition as the larger automated car wash operations. That would not affect anybody who's already out there operating. This would be for somebody starting something new.
Right. So anyone who's trying to start a new hand wash, a car wash, you have to go through?
Yeah, if you have a fixed location.
Yeah.
So you find a piece of property, "I'm going to set up a hand car wash, I'm going to hook up the hose and get out there and start working." There's a stormwater discharge that tends to have the dirt and things off the car as well as the detergent. That's regulated under the city's stormwater permit. And so we would want those folks to go through the same process to make sure their water that's being used in the process is properly handled and in accordance with the city's stormwater permit.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. And we do have one speaker. Do we have a speaker for this one, I believe, Madam Clerk?
Item E, yes, sir.
Good evening, sir. You have five minutes.
Good evening, mayor, council members, and other neighbors. So in the last few months, we've had two very modern car washes open in the city, two that I'm aware of. We have a total that I'm aware of, and I've not done an extensive survey in the city. But to my knowledge, there are six commercial car washes currently in the City of Portsmouth. And I was somewhat bemused by some of the discussion about the invasion of the car washes. There was one that opened in Suffolk, North Suffolk, not too long ago, but I haven't seen a major incursion here. So there nonetheless seems to be some consternation, and I believe that the remedy proposed is In terms of citing a car wash in industrial or a light industrial zone, I really don't see the need to be as protective as this change, as the proposed changes would make it. Definitely, when you are dealing with proximity to residential areas, certainly, I would say, exercise great diligence, but that's a different matter. Industrial and light industrial, not the same sort of considerations. Additionally, you're imposing a new burden on the next person who comes along, the next business that comes along, that you have not imposed on existing businesses. And my understanding is unless a business makes major modifications to their operation, they will not be subject to new regulations. So there's a competitive disadvantage. And I would caution you that the company formerly known as Wheelabrator has a fixed life expectancy in the city. Wheelabrator is a major water customer for the City of Portsmouth. Water sales are a major source of revenue that people don't necessarily think about until they get a big water bill themselves. So if you are discouraging potential users of Portsmouth water, you'll have an even bigger gap to fill in the eventuality that Wheelabrator's contract with the Navy comes to its planned termination, and they're no longer selling steam. I would urge you to eliminate the restrictions in the industrial and light industrial zones. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Once again, this is a public hearing, so anyone who would like to come forward and speak on this particular matter, you are able to do that at this time. Are you here to speak on this matter, the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Sharita Tarpley. I'm a current Iowa Tech student. I do have some concerns. I participate in Voices of Portsmouth a lot, and I have a lot of views concerning, you know, the issue with Mr. Barnes. I guess I'll reiterate. He says that these car washes are going to bring opportunities for youth. What about more trade schools? Like, I attend a trade school slash college, and I feel as if, you know, maybe, okay, car washes, job opportunities, but what about skill-building opportunities instead of just purposing it towards money? You know, everything is not about money. We're in a pandemic. You know, we need future goals for the youth, even for the older crowd, you know? I'm finished.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward? This is a public hearing.
Can I respond to that real quick?
You have the floor, sir.
I just wanted to say, Ms. Tarpley, I didn't say that. It might have been another council member that said that. I was one of the ones that was against all the car washes.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, just in response to what Mr. Godalski Yutrowski was speaking to, our consideration of changing this part of the ordinance goes well beyond just looking at the issue of car wash and water revenue. And I think Vice Mayor Barnes brought up this issue. We are concerned about jobs that are paying, and I think the issue that your lady just raised, that's why we are changing this ordinance, so that we don't have just car washes popping up, because they may provide jobs. But in a city that has the high poverty rate that we have, we have to also be concerned about pay. And so it's not just enough to have just the job, but jobs that pay and hopefully live in wages. And so it's more to it than just water revenue and allowing these car washes to come into existence. So I just wanted to inform you of that.
Thank you, sir. And just to add to that, one last just mention. One of the things that I had had the opportunity to review when I talked to the owners of the Clean Car Wash, and I inquired about their pay and their benefits, and they do offer a living wage to their employees, and they do also offer benefits such as health insurance, retirement, and other benefits as their employees. So they do offer good programs, and they do offer living wage benefits at their locations. Seeing no...
Mr. Mayor, are you saying across the board that that's what is happening?
Sir, all I did was make a statement. This really is not a debate. I just made about what my conversation was that I had with one of the individual companies that, as the mayor, they invited me there, and I just was giving out information as to what they do.
Right, right. So I just want to make sure you weren't making a cross-the-board assessment. You were just talking about one particular car wash.
Sure. I said clean car wash. That was the car wash that I spoke to. Yes, sir, Vice Mayor.
And then you have somebody I'd want to speak to, but I attended one of those Green Clean grand openings as well, and the conversation that I got from them, that it wasn't across the board, more so probably in management. Oh, I'm sorry. I was saying that I attended that, one of the grand openings as well, and that wasn't more so across the board, more so in the upper management.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Councilman Battle?
And whenever a manager or a person in charge speak to you about the business, whatever they tell you is not necessarily true. And we got to be vigilant and aware of that. So businessmen will tell us a lot of things, but here's an example. They offer benefits. There's a difference in offering benefits and giving you benefits. The City of Portsmouth offers me health insurance, but I pay more for the health insurance through the city than I would outside the city. So this terminology can really, really, you know, confuse folk, and we got to be vigilant of the wording.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. And ma'am, do you want to speak to this public hearing?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. You have five minutes.
Yes, sir. Thank you, councilmembers, Vice Mayor, Mayor. Appreciate your time this evening. I want to make sure I'm understanding this clearly. You want car washes to come into the City of Portsmouth for jobs where the greatest benefit to an individual is a career? Something that they can get from their placement, experience, exposure, et cetera, that will benefit them to the next level and next stage in life, not to live and die working at a car wash. That's not something that's positive, and we have limited land in the City of Portsmouth available, especially for new businesses, that we need to start supplying businesses that will establish experiences and exposures to build positive careers, to take our people to the next level. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. This is the public hearing, and the public hearing is still open. If you have a desire to speak on this particular issue... Councilmember Whitaker, sir, you have a minute. You, you, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for speaking, Ms. Lady that just left. I think you're absolutely correct. A city that's landlocked and we got to be strategic on what we place here in Portsmouth. We just don't want to continue just dumping random businesses here. For a company who's supposed to open up nine franchises within the seven cities, us allowing four to come here can be irresponsible on, on our behalf, you know? We do need to do better for our citizens. We do need to create more jobs and more, more strategic jobs, I'd say, that lead to career paths. So you're absolutely correct. I think we did talk to our EDA department and we were trying to find solutions to see what we can do to halt these operations or see what the citizens can do. Pretty much these things were set in place year prior to some of us coming on council. So, you know, all I can say is that I, I think we have council persons who are working diligently on making sure that things like this don't happen again, and we are taking input from our citizens. So your voice is being heard and I appreciate your comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come and speak to this public hearing? Go ahead, sir. You have the floor.
And I just want to say that I, I agree with some of the previous comments and Ms. Lady, because she didn't say her day. But I think we're, we're not trying to stop businesses in Portland. We're trying to bring quality businesses to Portsmouth. And the car wash is, is, is really about five or six that's, that's, that's coming. And they don't provide the type of jobs that our residents need to survive and to really deal with some of the issues that we have in this city. So I just wanted to make it clear that we're not trying to stop business. We're just trying to bring quality business to Portsmouth. And I don't think the car wash would be that quality business for us. May have some clean cars, but won't have clean houses.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, if you would like to come forward and speak to this particular issue, the public hearing is still open?
I want to say good afternoon to the All Red Dress House. My name is Kimberly Thorpe and it's a pleasure to be here.
Ma'am, could you please speak to the microphone a little bit better? Thank you.
My name is Kimberly Thorpe.
Thank you.
And it's a pleasure to be here with you guys on tonight. And my statement was, I'm totally against those car washes. I wish that you guys would approve another hospital. I think that that would really be an amazing thing that could come here to our city, bring so many jobs. And plus, we are in a pandemic. And I know Mira View was just, you know, overwhelmed with what goes on around here. So with, I mean, with that pandemic, I think it'll really be amazing to see another hospital in the city of Portsmouth. If you guys would ever approve another hospital, it will bring so many job opportunities. It will really help us all out a whole lot if y'all would consider another hospital. Okay? A nice location would be right on Portsmouth Boulevard. That space right there would be awesome for a new hospital. Y'all, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Lucas Burke, you have the floor, ma'am.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Thornton, for coming to speak to us. It did raise awareness of some of the things when I was on Economic Development Authority. There was conversation about may, maybe not per se another hospital, but a patient first or some kind of docs in the box or some kind of medical facility where we could go for urgent treatment matters. We have a lot of athletics, our students who are in sports events. We have to cross, across towns sometimes to just get to a patient first. But this ordinance will allow us the opportunity to take a look at each item that comes before the council. I know that there are, are three that were previously approved. And, you know, I've seen on social media, people want to see a restaurant where some of the car washes are. Some people want to see grocery stores which are desperately needed in a food desert where some of these car washes have been erected. And this gives council an opportunity to take a look at who's coming, who's presenting their use permit and for us to provide the opportunity to say yay or nay. We, we hear you loud and clear. We're going to be working through some things, but I do agree, a medical facility on this side of the track to help citizens who may be in need is desperately needed.
Thank you, ma'am. And seeing since, since this is a public hearing, this is a public hearing. But, but, but I want to caution everyone because we're kind of getting, on the public hearing, the matter is specific to the public hearing issue. So if you want to come before council and speak, it's specific to this particular issue. We have a non-agenda speaker portion of the agenda and that will take other issues up, but this is for the public hearing. Okay?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm up here listening to what's going on. And I agree with all the comments that have been said as far as we don't need another car wash. You know, I know it probably will bring jobs, but we got to think on another level for our young people that's in school, graduating and coming out and looking for jobs. I'm more for quality jobs, getting businesses to come here that's going to give our kids quality work, where they, what'll lead to a career path where they can do something, you know? So many people that are working in Portsmouth are leaving, going to other cities for better opportunities. So it's time for our city, we're a small city, but we got so many buildings around here that's vacant, been vacant for years. And it's a lot that Portsmouth can do that I believe that can help our people, help our children. You know, let's give them something to look forward to, something to hope for. Car wash, you can wash your own car in your garage, in your yard. I do mine. I wash my own car. I'm not down in car washes, but we need something more than that. And let's think on another higher level than that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. This is the public hearing. Seeing no other speakers, this public hearing is closed. And Madam Clerk, we are in need of a motion in a second.
Motion to approve.
Second. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We've now come to City Manager's Report. Item 21-304. And Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item.
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $552,761 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services and appropriating said sum in the FY 2022 Grants Fund for Use by the Commonwealth Attorney's Office for the Victim Witness Program.
Councilmembers, we are in need of a motion in a second?
Move for approval.
Second. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item 21-305. And Madam Clerk, please read the resolution we are considering pertaining to this item.
Yes, sir. A resolution supporting the city of Portsmouth FY 2023 Transportation Alternatives Set Aside Surface Transportation Block Grant Funding Application to the Virginia Department of Transportation.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Councilmembers, is there any discussion on this item? Madam Clerk, would you please? Well, we need a motion in a second?
Motion to approve.
Second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. And we've reached item 21-306. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we're considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorizing the execution of a fiscal year 2022 agreement with the Virginia Department of Health for funding and services of the Portsmouth Health Department.
Councilmembers, we are in need of a motion in a second?
Move for adoption.
Second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We have now come to new business. And Madam Clerk, I need to step away for a minute, so I'm going to ask the Vice Mayor to take over the agenda until I return.
Okay.
Dr. Whitaker, do we have anything to report as far as Portsmouth Commission?
Thank you. So we are now at 21-308, item submitted by council members. Do we have anything from council members? You too.
Councilwoman Lisa Burke?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just want to acknowledge that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And we used to wear pink, you know, I think you got a pink shirt on, somebody else. But we didn't do it. So I would ask that, that city staff if we could get a pink ribbon or a wreath or something to acknowledge that we are recognizing the awareness of breast cancer. It doesn't just affect women, it affects men. But most of all, it affects families when anyone is taken out. So there are some events that are happening across the city. So if you do feel inclined, please get involved this month to bring that awareness up and to reduce the issues. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anybody else? Council, Councilmember Whitaker?
Yes. I just want to bring to colleagues' attention that there's been an issue that has come to light. And that is in regards to the property that is located at 700 Crawford Street. That is the property that there was a development that was brought before us that we voted down, I believe, back in February. Come to light that there appears to be some authority that the council indirectly or directly gave to the city manager through an ordinance back in 2014. If this is, if this is the ordinance, if nothing preceded it. And that was somehow interpreted as giving the manager some authority to transfer that property or for EDA to consult directly with the manager and bypass city council in transferring 700 Crawford Street. And if that is the case, then council needs to rescind that authority. And I wanted to find out tonight from our city manager or others if that has been brought to your attention at all in regards to that property somehow being transferred without the consent of council.
If I understand your question correctly, are you asking if the property has been transferred?
No, I'm asking, are you aware of there being any type of authority that the city manager has where that property can be transferred by EDA through consulting with just the city manager without or by circumventing the city council?
I wouldn't say circumventing, but yes, that authority does exist.
Okay. And where did that authority come from?
I will look at the documentation and report back on that.
Has anyone approached you on that?
No.
Okay. So the resident, and the city attorney, if the city attorney, if this, if there's no objection from council, I would ask the city count, the city attorney to look into the resolution that was passed on September the 9th, 2014. And if there's any other resolution that precedes that or subsequent that would somehow give that interpretation, if you would bring it to our attention. And if so, we need to, at our next meeting, rescind that authority. I would ask you to take a look at Resolution R 1428, which was adopted on September the 9th, 2014. And appears to be some language in there that may be interpreted that way. And we want to make sure, and this, this is something that when we're talking about being transparent and also being fiscally responsible, we want to make sure that when property goes up for sale, that it goes through an open process. And there should be no situation where property in this city that the city owns is sold that does not come through city council, either at the front end or the back end. But I understand that when we voted back in February to not allow for that property to get the permit that it was seeking, that there was some efforts made to try to transfer that property without getting the consent of council and the authority was coming from this resolution unless there's some existing, other existing resolution.
Yes, I'm.
I'll check into it and report back.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And the, the second issue I would like to raise is that at the last meeting, I requested feedback from the city manager in regards to disparity study and our minority contracting. And as council knows, we received an email stating that the person that is over that area is on a vacation. And I believe that we have had ample time to get information regarding the disparity study and an update on minority contracting. And if this being stopped by one person being absent, then I think that speaks to the sincerity that we're putting at this program. I think we made it clear as a council that we are about equity. And I know that this program and discussion on disparity, the disparity study and minority contracting has caused quite a bit of disturbance, but it's the right thing to do. Having fair contracting practices and allowing people to be able to get contracts in this city regardless of their race is something that we need to make sure as a council that we put a policy to and hold our city manager responsible. And I think we have a council up here that's conscious enough to make sure we get that in place. And so someone being on vacation should not stop us from having that type of information. And to me, that indicates that there has not been a sincere effort in this regard. And I want to bring that to council's attention. And so at our next meeting, we should be able to get that information.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor. And then Councilman, Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you are after to go.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I see a number of speakers on the non-agenda portion of the meeting speaking against crime. A citizen brought to my attention via email that a lot of catalytic converters are being stolen from automobiles, not only in Portsmouth, but throughout the region. Apparently those things bring a pretty good dollar when you take them to a scrapyard. And obviously they're very costly to a citizen to replace them on the automobiles. What, what he's suggesting, suggesting, I think, makes pretty good sense. That we need to mandate that when scrapyards and we need to man. need to mandate that when scrapyards, and we need to mandate this through ordinance, perhaps, that would discourage a scrapyard from taking an individual catalytic converter without proof of where it came from. I think it makes good sense that we look into that. And maybe the ordinance would have a fine of some sort to anyone who accepts the, a stolen catalytic converter. Mayor, if there's consensus, I would like for staff to, to come back with a suggestion on the best way to control this. I do think it's a problem. I've heard of people having their converters stolen underneath their cars right in their own driveway. Apparently, this can be done very quickly. So if there are no objections, I would like for staff to come back with some recommendations on that problem.
Thank you, sir. And, and so Madam City Manager, and I assume probably the city attorney would have to have some input in that as well. So if we could come back with some information, how best to deal with this matter, that would certainly be appreciated.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I was, I was trying to understand what Mr. Moody was, was requesting. Are you, you're saying, what was that against finding and?
Yeah, I'm requesting Dr. Whitaker for staff to come back with a recommendation that would include perhaps a fine, obviously combined with an ordinance that prevent a scrapyard from taking a catalytic, individual catalytic converter without proof of where it came from.
Okay, okay.
And, and Vice Mayor Barnes, and then Councilwoman Lucas Burke. Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
If it was pertaining to this topic. Yeah, she's fine, she can go.
Okay, very good. Ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you. I, I am a victim. My business is a victim. We've had ten catalytic converters stolen off vehicles for persons who have developmental disabilities. It's a shame that you take those and then we're out of commission and they can't go and do the activities that they need to. But we're right now in the courts, been for a year trying to get this covered. But I do know that there are some legislators in the General Assembly this year who are going to take a look at some legislation relative to catalytic converters. So if our city attorney could probably get with them on some changes that they're going to make. Right now, it's only five hundred dollar fine. It doesn't make it a felony. So these guys who are taking the catalytic converters is, is of no consequence to them to, to go and to do that. So there is some legislation that is going to occur at the General Assembly this year that will address that issue. So if we can follow up with them with our ordinance, then we'll be right in line. Thank you.
Member Woodard had us in, but I know you were next. So, sir, would you like to go first or would you yield to? You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah. I also spoke with the city manager. I think we've been in talks about that this is something that's happening all over Portsmouth, all over, you know, the United States. I would say nobody's exempt from it, especially all the residents I talked to downtown in these garages with no cameras and whatnot. You know, overnight, they're cutting out these catalytic converters and, you know, taking them to the scrapyard. So I agree with Councilman Moody on seeing what we can do to, to put some type of fine or some type of consequences for, for these guys taking them to these scrapyards and, and profiting off of people, you know, people being victims. So I'm agreeing with it and I think that is something we should put on the table today.
Thank you, sir. And Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
So in the last couple of weeks, since our last meeting, I attended our, me and Councilman Woodard attended our Fire Academy Commit Ceremony. We got a lot of new firefighters. We were, me and Councilman Woodard was able to talk to those firefighters. A lot of them are from New York, New Jersey, Maryland, just a lot of different areas in the, in the world. And it's, it was crazy to see that they wanted to come to Portsmouth. And that just tells you how much potential we have in this city and how, how, how we can progress and be something great with people actually want to come here. With that being said, also, Councilwoman Burke and I attended the Virginia Municipal League Annual Conference, was able to meet a lot of people, was able to spend some time with her as well. But was able to meet a lot of people. I talked to, it was in Leesburg, and I was talking to the mayor of Leesburg, and I was just talking to her about all the things that they're doing and some of the difficulties that they're having in their city. But it's a nice city. Hopefully, that we can move into some of the direction they're going. They're really doing a lot of building. So I'm really looking forward to and hoping that we'll be doing the same as well. But back to reality in Portsmouth, since our last meeting, we've had three children get shot that was under seventeen that died. That was actually in a twenty-four hour span. We've had over ten shootings. We've also had another, two other killings that involved our adults. So I just wanted to make sure that the violence and the crime amongst our youth and amongst our citizens is still important and it's not something that we can let die. So looking forward to actually hearing something regarding where our plan is, getting an update and where we're going with that. Because I don't want to have to continue to hear about this on a regular basis about us losing children over and over and over again. It's so bad that we're sort of immune to it now. When it happens, we're not even shocked. So it's, it's up to us on this council. Like I always say, the community is doing their part. It's up, it's up to us on council to continue to do our part, well, do our part because we haven't done our part. And as far as the couple of things that I asked for last week, the, the blighted properties that's going to be coming up in the next meeting, correct? And also, I know we got something regarding the fourth floor, but we're going to begin to update more. And because I'm going to send another email regarding some more detail that I wanted regarding, I just wanted to make sure that that was still coming up. And as far as I mentioned earlier regarding the facilities, the recreation facilities, I wanted to add to the Churchland softball field. I, I've been hearing about how bad it is. So I wanted us to look into that. I know they're having dugout problems, field problems. So I wanted us to look at that as well. And also, still, a couple of months ago, it was asked that we get a comprehensive plan regarding all of our recreation in the facility, as far as the facilities and just everything in general. So hopefully, at least in the next, if not the next meeting, the meeting after that, we can get a presentation regarding that. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And since we are still on items submitted by council, I wanted to take a moment to update everyone and thank, first of all, Vice Mayor Barnes for taking this seat and conducting the meeting at last meeting. Appreciate all of his effort. And let everyone know, I was gone away because I was selected of a group of thirty-eight mayors throughout the world to participate in the Harvard Bloomberg City Leadership Initiative. It enabled me to sit at the table with mayors from across the country and the world and share real life experiences on how we can improve our cities together. And the resources that we'll be able to bring to our city of Portsmouth and the assistance will be very much appreciated. So just stay tuned on the developments. It is a year-long program, and we look forward to bringing great ideas and great resources to help our city improve. But I want to thank you all for your well wishes, and it's great to be back. The other thing I wanted to mention is, some of you in the audience may know friends of ours, members of the Portsmouth family, Mr. Pat and his wi, Mr. Tyrone and his wife, Pat Hines. They have done a lot of work with the Westmoreland Youth Association here in the city of Portsmouth. And if you know Tyrone Hines, he's always asking you to contribute to something and is usually good. So they, they've gone on an adventure of raising funds for the Legacy Learning Scholarship Fund. And he wanted me to report to all of you in the city of Portsmouth that they have reached their goal of fifteen thousand and surpassed it. They're now at seventeen thousand. And it's all because of you, citizens in this community, that give of their time, resources and efforts to improve the quality of life for everyone. And so I just want to let you know and convey to you from him a warm-hearted thank you for your contributions and your efforts. Councilmember Moody, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one more item. The, the King Square Parking, Surface Parking Lot on County Street. Some business people and citizens who have utilized that lot in the past have noticed a change in the signage and the parking fee requirements, along with some bags that kind of denoting monthly parking parameters. But they're concerned that people who've used it in the past won't, won't be able to use it. I would like for staff to get back with us on what, what the changes are, who, who made them, and under what conditions going forward is the, the lot going to be utilized.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes?
You probably already know this, but in that comprehensive, comprehensive plan regarding the recreation, as far as the, I wanted to know too, to kind of get a cost of what it would take to expand what we have the sports place now into that actual field house that we were looking at, to kind of using that as some of it?
Okay.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Jones, are there, item twenty-one dash three zero nine, are there any pending items?
No, sir. I think I have all the pending items.
And also, Bernadette, ma'am, Ms. Hall, do you have something you, you need to bring before council? Please.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of city council, the non-agenda speakers update for the council meeting on September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one is as follows. There were eight non-agenda speakers. Sun Sun Swinson expressed her concern to city council about the recent gun violence in the downtown area and the effect that it is having on small businesses. The city manager, the police chief, and the deputy city manager slash director of economic development are planning a meeting with the businesses in the downtown area to identify potential solutions. Several speakers presented proposals to city council about various nonprofit programs. The city manager was asked to speak with the speakers after the meeting to gather more information. The city manager has scheduled meetings with these individuals to discuss these programs in greater detail.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Vice Mayor Barnes?
Just one question I heard about as far as we're scheduling a meeting with the business owners regarding the crime downtown. Did we, are we scheduling a meeting with the communities that's affected by the crime in Portsmouth? And I'm not talking about the organizations, I'm talking about the citizens because ultimately they're the ones that have to live in it. So they can probably give us a better insight of what's going on opposed to that.
Yes, we have been meeting with, in the community as well as with civic associations.
I don't think they can hurt you.
I thought I turned it. Sorry. We have been meeting in the community as well as with civic associations. And that's one of the things that we're going to be following up on more, is getting more out in the community and talking about what initiatives we're doing.
So, so for instance, because Dale's Home is a high crime area, South Side is a high crime area, Swanson, those areas, and they also have communities, well, not communities, and there's little clubhouses, I guess you can call it. Can we go out there and have meetings in those communities and make it heavily publicized so that they'll know and come out and address some of the issues that they have?
Absolutely. And the other thing that we're already doing is using our credible messengers that are on grant funds that are going into those communities, getting information as well as taking information to them. So we're working in partnership with organizations to get that information out.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have now come to item twenty-one dash three one zero, non-agenda speakers. And I just want to remind our speakers that you have five minutes. Madam Clerk, could you read our first speaker?
Sure. Our first speaker is Ms. Sharita Tarpley. Please come forward. Thank you.
Welcome, ma'am. You have five minutes.
Once again, good evening. I guess this is my, my speech. I wrote it. Individualism is a source of success and we succeed to live on today in theory and in hope. Expressions of city, state, and worldwide calamities hinder us all and our youth. Within our economy, we struggle to recognize the fate of chaos by shielding these perceptions with lack of awareness, selfishness, and greed. But as a whole body, a government of fully formed people destined to overcome the fallible, we shall rise against this pandemic into a greater and stronger nation, walking in faith and standing on all principles. Statistics are boiling down to what, what's best in today's struggles. At hand, we have public chaos beyond sickness. We have crime rates steadily climbing and so much burdens to bear. We stand continuously to regain, regroup, and reorganize for the betterment. I believe that dreams will come true in due time, but minorities can and will be afforded better lives and more skill-building opportunities. Currently, I am approaching an associate of science at Tywhortech Institute. Focus is here now. I am speaking to existence. Let's live on. We shall learn to seek higher education and amenities for all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Gary Behana?
Welcome, sir. You have five minutes.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the city council, Madam City Manager. My name is Gary Behana. I live at four two eight North Street, Portsmouth, Virginia, right here in Old Town. I am president of the Friends of the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard Museum. We're an independent five oh one C three here in the city. We provide financial and program support to the Shipyard Museum. And at the request of the Museums Department, we've added the Lightship Portsmouth to our portfolio. We recently, we're, we're in the process of going through two large events. We recently completed one. We're, we're starting another. Wanted to update you on them and in one case to request your assistance. First of all, about a month ago, we completed the inaugural paddle battle event, Portsmouth Paddle Battle Event, right here in, in High Street Basin. It was a series of paddleboard and kayak racing up to the Hammerhead Creek and back from the basin here. From what we have heard, it was a total success. Everybody who, who participated, including the, the mayor who got wet, enjoyed it and has promised to come back next year. We hope some of the other council members will join the mayor and the water next year and, and, or at least just come out and, and participate. We raised a little bit over thirty-five hundred dollars for the museums. It was our first year. We expect next year, we've got some lessons that we've learned. We expect that number next year to exceed ten thousand and maybe hit fifteen thousand. Again, everything we raise, everything that comes to our five oh one C three ends up in the pockets of, of the Shipyard Museum or the Lightship Portsmouth Museum. I wanted to thank, reach out and do a, a thank you to some people in the city. We hear a lot of people complain about people who work for the city. That was not our experience. We had some people who, who really stood out, and I want to bring their, their names out publicly. I want to thank the mayor, who a number of times went out of his way. We were the first special events permit granted this year during COVID for, for September. It took a number of phone calls from the mayor and a number of phone calls from other people. We're really grateful, Mr. Mayor. I also want to thank Lavoris Pace, who was acting city manager, interim city manager at the time. I would say Lavoris and I didn't start out on the best terms for this event, but we finished on the best terms, and I miss Lavoris in all the various roles that, that he had. Lastly, I want to, I want to do a shout out thank you to two particular city staff people who work in this building, Renee Spratley and Stacy Porter, who went out of their way to help. They're wonderful folks. I look forward to working for them in the future. And I want to thank our new angel of a city manager, Angel Jones, city manager, was also a great big help to us. And I, we really appreciate it. We're, the next event is the second Saturday of next September, two thousand twenty-two. We're looking forward to doing it again. And if we have time when I'm done, I'd like to present- to present these two thank yous to the city manager and to the mayor. The new project that we're doing is an oral history project. It is telling the, by oral histories, multi-generational families at the shipyard. The oral history of their working at the shipyard and their living in Portsmouth. What's special about this project is, we're doing it with the IC Norcom TV production students. They're going to do the interviewing, they're going to do the filming, they're going to do the editing, they're going to put together this product. The friends are merely funding the product, we're bringing in some experts to help them. We're looking forward to doing it, they're very excited about it, we're very excited about it. Where we would need your help is, and I hate to say this, we've already identified a number of families, but none of them are what we'd call diverse. We need whatever help that you can get. I wanted to speak here to invite members of the community who are of color, to please reach out to us. They can do that by calling the Shipyard Museum, giving their number, and that information will be passed on to me. But we are looking for multi-generational African-American and other minority families who worked in the shipyard over the years, two, three generations, and who lived in Portsmouth. We want you to be a part of the story that we're telling. Hopefully, at the end of this, this entire product will become a new hallmark exhibit in the Shipyard Museum and be displayed on other city media sites. So with that, anything that you all can do to help, I'm going to be reaching out to the city manager about getting on the Facebook page and some other things, we would appreciate that help. And since I'm out of time, I'll hand these to you both after we're done.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Katrina Smith?
Mr. Mayor, can I say one thing?
Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
How you doing? Can you give me just a second? Mr. Gary, did you sit down already?
He sat down.
Oh, Mr. Gary, you know, it takes a lot of courage to come up here and ask for diversity into your program, to really acknowledge that, hey, you know what? I don't know a lot of people in another race, but hey, can you guys help me out with that? Not even funding, you were asking for participation. That takes a lot of courage, you know? And it really touched my heart, it really did. That takes a lot of courage to come up here and say, you know, I'm not familiar with your culture, could you help me out a little bit? And I want you to help expand my program. I really appreciate that, I really do. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Welcome back.
I was about to say, I'm back in.
Yes, you have five minutes.
My name is Katrina Smith, and tonight I want to speak on our enormously high crime rate and the gun violence in our city of Portsmouth. Portsmouth has a crime rate that is 173% higher than the national average. We are the smallest city in Hampton Roads in our seven cities. We are the highest crime rate in America compared to communities of all different sizes, which is a crime rate of 6/8 per 1,000 people. Councilman Moody, you spoke on, you know, and it's not just, you know, gun violence, it's other things, you know? You spoke on people stealing catalytic converters, I've heard of that going on in our community. And you addressed a plan of action on what you want to do about it, finding the auto, you know, shops that are taking in these catalytic converters, finding and protecting these catalytic converters. City manager, Angel Jones, when DeAndre Barnes addressed you, you know, you planned on going somewhere to talk in the communities about the gun violence. We want a plan of action, like William Moody spoke about, for the gun violence and the crime in our city. We don't just want to talk anymore, we want to know what is the plan of action. The same way you spoke on the plan of action for the catalytic converters, what's the plan of action to stop our 14-year-old and 12-year-old and 13-year-old babies from dying and getting gunned down every day when they step off the school bus? That shouldn't be the norm, we shouldn't be immune to that. I'm not immune to anybody's baby dying, you know? That just shouldn't be normal in our, you know, city. Every week, a lot of people speak on the curfew, maybe we should, you know, have a curfew. We do have a curfew. But unfortunately, these things are happening at 1:30 PM in the afternoon, 2 o'clock in the afternoon, they're not waiting to after curfew. And they're not shooting, they're not killing from inside their homes, out their bedroom windows, they're outside. So apparently, we need the police protection outside where these crimes are happening, but, you know, we're not getting it. I'm not an activist or anything like that, I'm just a concerned mother. I love all children, not just my children, and I just want to see our children live. You know, I see you're trying to bring programs into the city, you know, jobs into the city, you know, you said car washes and things like that, but these children have to live to be old enough to work these jobs. And nothing is happening right now to stop that. Sometimes when people call the police in Portsmouth, we get directed to Chesapeake dispatcher, and then they have to redirect us to Portsmouth. That could save somebody's life those minutes that we're wasting, seconds that we're wasting being directed to another city. Why is that happening now? If I pick up the phone and I call the police, Chesapeake police dispatchers are picking up, Portsmouth dispatchers pick up, somebody can be laying on the ground dying for those seconds that we're being transferred from Chesapeake to Portsmouth. So I just want to know a plan of action that is going to be proposed to stop that, instead of just talking. We don't want to hear what we're going to do anymore or talking anymore, we want to see a plan of action.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Freddie Taylor Smith?
Can we, because we have more speakers, can we hold the questions until we're done, please? And then you can address it. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker?
Good evening. My name is Freddie Taylor, senior.
Good evening, Mr. Taylor, sir. You have five minutes.
I'm on the board of Stop the Violence 757, and I just have a couple of questions to present. We spend a lot of time talking about issues. When are we going to get to the point of addressing the issues by coming up? Like, I come in, the young lady came before me, she said, the plans of actions. What is being done? Because I've lived in the city of Portsmouth for two years now, and every time I turn on my TV, we're having discussions, we're having roundtables. We're wasting money inside of these buildings instead of taking the funds and applying them where the need is. Where are the kids who have issues in schools? Why don't we have technical schools to teach them auto mechanics, brick masonry, and things of this nature? Because all kids learn differently, so that's another issue that we have to deal with. Another issue that we have to deal with, why aren't there any gun buyback programs in the city? What is being done? During the pandemic, we seen individuals getting raises while the city was suffering. I'm not here to bash anybody, I'm saying, as a father, as a husband, as a member of this community of Portsmouth, I'm tired. And we've heard this time and time again, all right, what do we do once we get tired? We have to begin to sit down and not dialogue, but sit down and brainstorm and come up with things to do. There are many ways that we, the recreation centers, kids don't have nowhere to go. That's one issue we need to tackle, because if we give them something to do, they won't be occupied with stealing cars, riding around doing drive-bys. But their clothes, okay, we understand during the pandemic. They built the Boys and Girls Club on the other end of, what, Portsmouth Boulevard? That's not helping our communities. They got the YMCA, they way out, they don't even have buses, like back in the day to come and pick kids up. So our kids are underprivileged, uncared for, and it shows. There's money, we're talking about fiscal year 2022, fiscal year 2023, where's the money at from fiscal year 2020? That should have been applied. Once again, I'm not accusing, I'm asking questions. As a concerned parent and citizen of our community, where's the money? It comes down, there are a series of funds that come down through community developmental block grants. Where's the money that's been assessed? I feel that we need to do an inquiry into the misappropriation of funds, because I don't see any of them. I don't see, I look and I see, and I see these kids, and when I go out there and talk to them, you know what they tell me? Pastor, ain't that what I should do? From church land to downtown, all they doing is walking around, and if y'all do have places open, they have to cross gang lines to go into other places to get into community centers. So that's another issue. What are we doing? As I look and I see, I'm really amazed, because we have a high concentration of black leadership in this city, but we have the highest crime. There is a proposed $300 million casino coming. How many black business owners will be contracted through them? Yeah, they'll let us work in their hotels, they'll let us work, they're like, wow, we got to be in the service industry all the time. Why can't we get those contracts? There are black contractors in this city, why can't they get some of these contracts? All of y'all can't answer one, but y'all need to think about this, because it's sad. I know some police officers, you know, police officers are leaving our city by the droves going to Virginia Beach, trust me, because they're getting paid more. Think about it, they're putting their lives on the line for $35,000, $36,000, $37,000 a year, when these kids are in situations of fear and they're shooting at the police. We're not paying them, so why would they stay? I say, I'm not angry with anybody in particular, I'm just saddened that with all the love that's talked about, we don't know how to show it.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Edrika Oliver? She not here? Okay. Mr. Elliot Hill? See here?
Hey, how everybody doing today?
Sir, how are you? You have five minutes, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle, Ms. Jones, Woodrow, Barnes, just a name of a few guys we was able to speak to when talking about what's going on in the community of Portsmouth. And I'd really like to say thank y'all. A program that just was passed, I think, by the Sheriff's Department, hopefully that's some solutions that can pass, can help the city of Portsmouth. But I came up here to talk about like, community service, and like, the trust that the city have in community organizations in the city of Portsmouth. Like, some of the organizations trying to get in schools, group homes, juvenile courts, but there's a lot of yellow tape. And being that a lot of these community organizers doesn't have the faith of the council members, it's hard for us to get in those spaces. Just to get in school, like an individual like me that's a convicted felon, is almost impossible. But yet, we got individuals who are in gangs that we relate to even more that's in the schools, can't get to them. Juvenile courts and probation, individuals who can be incentivized to come through programs to hurt individuals, stories like mine, we can't get in those spaces. Group homes, behavior group homes, we can't get in those statements and those places. If I get my phone, we done made phone call after phone call, email after email, but it's all the yellow tape up, we can't get in those spaces. So for the community organizers in Portsmouth, like she said, there's a whole lot of community organizers in here, but we just can't get in spaces. We limited to throwing social events in the heart of the projects, right? Where it's not incentivized for kids to even listen, so a lot of the kids just get the entertainment and bow out. But if we can get in these juvenile probations, these behavior group homes, these schools, if somehow that the city of Portsmouth can assist some of the community leaders in making that possible, I think we can start denting it. You know, we walk around the communities and we hurt, but when it comes time for us to get in the spaces, where we can collectively talk to them as a collective group, a whole, because a lot of regionalism is in Portsmouth. I can be out learning notes and never get hurt in Swanson. I can be out Swanson, and they will never listen to me in Southside. But if we meet them where we can, when they're forced to be diversified, then the message, you know, is incentivized, they are listening. So I only come up here to say, for the individuals who have heard me that I was able to meet with, if somehow that some amendments can be made, or somehow groups can be given some special permission, a ticket, a day, that the city throw an event where community organizers can come to these places, I think that would do a lot. Because we are forcing it, we having to foot the bill on our own, not money-wise, but reinforcement. People just showed up at the bus stops to greet the kids, but it was only so many bus stops, what if we could have went inside the schools and did that? You know, what if we can offer encouragement, what if we can offer our stories? A lot of people don't think it's possible to change in the streets. They think, when we say change, they thinking, you got to warp your whole reality and personality. No, you can be you and be a productive citizen and still practice public safety and public awareness. It's just how you come at it. So we just got to meet, we just, if possible, I don't know if it's possible, with the school board, but if so, please assist the community leaders, have faith in us, we got faith in y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Ma'am, I know we have a lot of speakers, but some of these concerns need to be addressed, like...
I think, sir, we will address the concerns, you'll have an opportunity to address every speaker that has come up. We want to get through the speakers, and you'll have your chance at the floor. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Mr. Mark Adolde Giotrowski?
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, Council, and fellow neighbors. So, a few random things. Sure would do my heart good to see that scoreboard lit up again, well, lit up for the first time, I don't think I've ever seen it lit up. It's been hanging on that wall for a while, and I'm sure it cost a pretty penny. How about if we put some juice to it and get it going, so people can see how the votes go and other relevant information, like how much time is left on the meter here?
Move adoption.
Next. Public safety is a major concern in this town, and I'd like to do my part. So if you would reinstate virtual citizen participation, you can get one more old geezer off the road after dark, and I could participate from my computer at home. And I'm sure there are others similarly situated. I know some of the great alums of the past who stopped coming here because they couldn't see to drive down to the meetings, so help us out. Next thing. It's taking an awful long time to replace the city attorney. I don't know what the dynamic is, but it seems to me that by this point in time, having started when you started, we should have had somebody to fill that slot. Now, I'm not saying your deputy city attorney, your acting city attorney hasn't been doing a great job for you, but there should be a permanent city attorney here. So I'm wondering if people have heard about the climate, the working climate here for council appointees, and if it scared them off? If that's the case, then y'all need to make some changes, right? Change the climate, it's going to be a whole lot easier than changing the climate on the planet. You need to be respectful to the people who come before you, who work for the citizens and you. Let's get that position filled. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Walter Carter?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Carter, sir.
Mr. Vice Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Walter Carter. I live at fourteen oh one Watch Avenue, Portsmouth, Virginia. And I have a request for the council. Can my wife come up and read for me? I'm having a problem with my eyes.
Mr. Carter, yes, sir.
Okay. I'm gonna let her read these off first and then I'll give you my comments.
Welcome, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor, and to all of the City Council. I've been helping him all these years, I won't stop now. He is having a real problem with his eyes, so I don't mind reading for him.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we have some issues with the adjacent property. Of course, this property is at fourteen twenty-eight Portsmouth Boulevard, and that's an auto repair shop. Over the years, we have had problems. When it was rezoned to commercial, that's when it all, you know, really began. With the people who rent the place or the owner of the business has changed over the years. But the council had put an ordinance in place that would protect us as well as the business. None of those things, the owner ordinance that should protect us, has been carried out and really put in focus, to the point where they have now joined business on business coming out of the same place. All right, overnight, sometimes the trucks now, the big trucks that you would see on the road as you travel are coming in and out, and we are right next door, any time of night, four day in the morning, which disturbs us really bad. Now, we have reported this over and over, we have talked to different people down here, but I want to address a few of the issues so you know exactly what I'm talking about. Number one, the profers, and when it was rezoned to commercial, that part of the land that's adjacent to us, the conditions, the zoning amendment ordinance, none of the applicable codes involving this has protected my husband and I. They're not being implemented nor carried out, which is a shame, because we suffer because no one seems to be really on top of it. We have come down and complained many, many times. Number two, it is being used for more than an automobile repair shop. They have large trucks. Why would a breading company have trucks parked there, which go out at all time? Bread trucks, I mean, the largest one, almost like the largest trucks you can find. They have also now... You have a card?
I gave it.
You gave it to... Okay, they have another business called Road Dogg Towing that's been added there. I don't know if these people have permits for all these businesses at one little place. They have trucks and cars that only supposed to be there to be repaired, and after repairment, they're supposed to be moving on. But the cars are staying there, overcrowding. All right, right here, let me go to, and we put the first page there so you could see how long that we have been going through this since, what, nineteen ninety-seven? And would you believe it, this is twenty twenty-one, and it's still issues.
While she is looking for this, there have been times that I came down and complained to various parts of the city, and...
Mr. and Mrs. Carter, Mr. and Mrs. Carter, can I say something, please?
Yes, sure.
I'm not trying to interrupt you, sir, but I've been listening and I think my colleagues have been listening. Based on the information you've shared with us, we understand that you need help. And what I'd like to do at this point, if I could, Ms. Hogg over there, is sitting over there, Ms. Bernadette Hogg, she's gonna get all of your information and we will get this information, we're gonna take all your information down, we're going to get with the manager and her team, and we're gonna look into this and we're gonna find some answers for you.
Thank you so much.
Okay? So, you have that commitment. So, I just, I didn't want to cut you off.
That's okay.
But I wanted to let you know, your concern is our concern.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And you were found a lot in the paperwork that I gave you.
Yes, sir. And we'll make sure...
The pictures that I gave you show you a lot, too.
Yes, sir, we'd like to keep those pictures, if you want us to keep those that you provided. If not, we certainly can get copies, but we will have all the copies of the information and we will follow up with you accordingly. So, don't leave yet, please. Make sure you get with Ms. Hogg, okay? Thank you all so much for coming down.
The next speaker is Mr. Steve Carroll.
Evening, Mayor, Council, members of staff.
Good evening, sir. You have five minutes.
Thank you. Guess what? We have a crime problem. How about that? Now, two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty, and I could not pull any stats for twenty-one because it's not on the site, our murder rate was up ninety-three percent. How many have we had this year? Is it twenty, twenty-two, twenty-four, thirty, thirty-two? How many have we had? So, now, I just heard a hundred and seventy percent increase. I believe that. You know, when you solve a problem, you have to look at it objectively. That's what leadership is. You take the facts, you look at the problem objectively, and you come up with solutions. I did it for forty-seven years as a civilian for the U.S. Navy. It's not being done here. Sources I've talked to say we're down seventy to one hundred police officers. I don't know if that's true or not. If it's twenty, if it's thirty, why? Let's get right down to it. In March of this year, we had a murder in my neighborhood. I live in a safe, dead-end neighborhood. An eighteen-year-old punk blows the brains out of a sixteen-year-old kid within golfball distance of my house over a drug deal. And not one of you, where were you? I had one member of council provide me feedback when I inquired, I'm the civic league president, where were you? Hmm? Or has it just become numb? Well, I'll give you another opportunity. Come on out to my neighborhood tomorrow and I'll show you exactly where he got his brains blown out, and that a car was driven ten foot forward and his body was dumped on the pavement, and I can show you the puddle of blood where the bullet went in and the brains came out. Is that what it takes to get it fixed? Now, some people will blame a lot of things for it. We got one member of council likes to blame it on poverty. Interesting that per capita income in this city has gone up steadily from two thousand eleven to two thousand twenty, from thirty-six thousand to forty-two thousand dollars a year. Those are your figures, not mine. Poverty? We have poverty where people could go and buy pot and pot parapinella now, and we're gonna open up a casino that preys on the poor and insiders make the money? Give me a break. About the same time that a murder in our neighborhood occurred, I stopped at two in the morning because I had to get gas in Churchland, in a Portsmouth gas station. As I'm pumping my gas, somebody comes up behind me and says, hey, you, what do you think I was thinking? At two in the morning, when somebody comes up to me and says, hey, you, you know what You know, when you fix criminal conduct, you have to set the example. We had a call for Anti-Gun Violence Day. Why not a Support Your Local Police Officer Day? We have a Commonwealth's Attorney who gets a groove on going after our police officers instead of dealing with the real criminals. The parade that we had in here, you know, for anti-gun violence, some of the people that participated in it participated in the riot June tenth, and they were armed. Guess what, folks? That's a class six felony they were never prosecuted for. So, let's get real here. You gotta set the example, members of council. Set the example. Yeah, we've got a crime problem, and it's not the guns. That's like blaming the sugar bowl for diabetes. I've handled guns for ten years, since I was ten. That's not the problem.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Barnes, and members of the prestigious Portsmouth City Council. My name is Lakeisha Atkinson. I'm here not as vice chair of the Portsmouth School Board, but as a citizen, speaking on two different issues. The first issue that I would like to speak to the council about is economic development. We know Portsmouth, the song says that Portsmouth is for people, all kinds of people. But in a way, to bring people to the city, we have to think differently, we have to think outside the box. In order for a city to expand and bring revenue to the city, there's three things that have to be in place: sports, entertainment, and arts. That's the only thing that's gonna bring you the revenue that you need to put money into recreation centers, fund the police, fund programs, fund raises. There's no other option. I researched this, I studied this. Festivals and events, cities get ten percent of the tax revenue, revenue. I know you guys have seen it in the paper with the Something in the Water Festival and the loss that the city of Virginia Beach is about to take, twenty-four million dollars of revenue in one year. If we bring the festivals to the city of Portsmouth, Portsmouth receives ten percent of admission tax. This also helps the small businesses. We had the business owners speak last week on how they are begging and pleading and crying for assistance. When we have concerts at the pavilion, we need to promote our small businesses downtown. Another idea, when Sunset Thursdays happen, why not put the stage in the middle and the people go eat in the restaurants downtown to help those businesses downtown? There's so much we can do, but there is a blockage here. I submitted a special events permit for the recreation center. I read through the policy, there's nothing that say I can't request a special events permit for this particular park. I sent the policy over, but I was told that the policy would be changed because I am requesting the permit. I'm asking the members of the City Council to look into this and why that was denied and why that change is being put in place because I requested the special events permit. The second issue I want to speak on is the violence in the community. I'm not gonna sugarcoat anything, it's about money, it's about funding. The reason why I say this is because a lot of these organizations, we are out here, we are taking the calls, but we have a lack of resources because we have a lack of funding. I'm on several boards, my phone rings twenty-four hours a day, two o'clock in the morning, six o'clock in the morning, ten o'clock in the morning, I work during the day. I have denied parents, I have denied kids because of my lack of resources. My organization is self-funded, and I fund my organization through fundraisers. I also submitted several organizations that can assist with helping stop the violence. These organizations are: The May Foundation, Stop the Violence seven-five-seven, CUTS, Gear Back to the Block, All People Cultural Center, I Am Me, Vision Driven seven-five-seven, Connecting Communities, Thrive LLC. These are all organizations that have been putting on events and helping kids for long term in the city of Portsmouth. Most of the members of the City Council, Mayor Glover, have attended these events that have been put on by these organizations. We are sustainable organizations, we are credible organizations, so there's no reason why we cannot get assistance from the city, there's no reason why we cannot get funding. Another issue with that is, again, we are the direct contacts to the parents and the kids. We know what the kids need, we know what the parents need. Most of the issues we are aware of, and we are firsthand in contact with what's going on. But like I said, due to lack of resources, we are not able to assist these families and these childrens. So, I ask you guys to consider that. Please stop putting this off. We do not need another child to die due to gun violence in our city. I'm asking you guys to expedite whatever it is and also consider not only accessing funding to nonprofits but for LLCs. And I have twelve seconds to say that. The reason why I say this is my program helps kids through music and beats and production, and if they get connected to where they make a beat for a particular artist, I would want them to get paid for that. So, consider other than nonprofits. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our final speaker is Mr. Linwood Williams.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir.
Good.
I'm Linwood Williams, this is my wife, Tiara Williams, she'll be speaking along with me within that five minutes about our program.
Okay, you have five minutes, sir.
Thank you. Good evening to the mayor, vice mayor, City Council members and elected officials and the public. For the record, like my husband said, my name is Tiara Williams and this is Linwood Williams, and we come to you on behalf of our program. Our organization is called CUTS YEP. CUTS stands for Cleaning Up the Streets Youth Employment Program, and we operate right here in the city of Portsmouth. So, we wanted to come before you tonight to introduce ourselves to you and to introduce our program to you. And we promise we'll be brief and give you a brief summary of our organization. And we wanted to also present ourselves to you and see if you had any questions that you would like to address to us while we are here in your presence. I am the vice president of the organization, and Mr. Williams here is the president and the director of the organization. In summary, CUTS YEP is a faith-based organization, and we facilitate meaningful employment to the youth in the city of Portsmouth. We also provide mentoring services to the youth in the city of Portsmouth. We participate and facilitate community service events in the city of Portsmouth, and we also provide quarterly training to the participants in our program. And those quarterly trainings address life readiness, job readiness, training to the youth who participate in our program. And we're here also, not only to introduce our program, but to make you aware of our program in hopes to partnership with the city of Portsmouth, with our program, and that partnership will look like us introducing our youth... so they can partner, well, work inside the Sheriff's Department or the Portsmouth Police Department, or any way that you guys see fit how we can bridge the gap between our youth and the officials within the city. So we can provide a more trusting and community service to the city. And Mr. Williams here is gonna give you another, more in detail, brief summary of our organization.
Good evening. Good evening. Like I said, I'm Linwood Williams, the director of CUTS. Now, like Ms. Williams said, our organization is a faith-based organization. And to be transparent, the number one thing that our youth needs today is God. And that's something that we're here to provide. Again, someone has to introduce them, and that's what CUTS is about. We not only provide employment, but we also provide different opportunities that our youth serve within the community. On Sundays, again, our youth can be seen at St. Mark's Missionary Baptist Church. What we do, we provide and give the necessary means so they can learn how to serve. Not only employ throughout the week, but we want to teach them how to serve. And that's the biggest means of our program, is to teach our youth how to serve. We focus on mentoring, productive employment, and also teaching them how to serve. Again, what we see in today's society is our youth want to be what they see, either on TV or at home, right? When we introduced our program this summer, my number one thing I asked the youth is, "What do you want to be?" 90% of them said, "I want to be a basketball player, football player, or rapper." Because that's what they see. So our program, what we do, again, we let them know that it's bigger than what they see on TV. You can be successful coming out of Portsmouth just by, again, learning to serve. Now, me and my wife, we were born and raised in the city of Portsmouth. I'm from Swanson Home, she's born in Southside, right? I've got my wife pregnant at age 16, right? 15 and 16. We born in the projects, our parents, single-parent homes. Again, our fathers to this day are still on drugs, right? But with God's grace, we made a way, right? Been married 21 years, four young men and a daughter, two sons in college, right? You can be successful coming out of Portsmouth, right? And that's what we did. We coming back to give to the city of Portsmouth. And what we want to do is ask for your partnership, because we need also guidance and help with the city.
Thank you, sir. Before you leave, I am aware that our city manager and her team are meeting with folks, such as you, that offer programs like yourselves. And we appreciate you coming forward. I would ask that you, after the meeting, that you give her your information so that you could get on her calendar, perhaps, to come?
Already scheduled.
Madam manager?
It's already scheduled.
It's already scheduled. How about that?
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
I just wanted to say, I was definitely trying to be a team player tonight. I kinda, I don't like this process, because I like to talk back to the citizens when they come up. I think they kind of deserve that. So in the future, I would rather us not go through with this type of process waiting to the end, because you also get people who leave, and you kind of want to address some of their issues. But to talk about some of the things that was discussed tonight with our speakers, it was a question asked, "What's the status of our plan of action?" I know a couple of months ago, we said six months. Do we have an update of where that plan of action is?
We will provide an update.
When will we provide an update?
At the next meeting.
Thank you. To Mr. Taylor, I don't know if he's still in the building.
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to talk about some of the things that you had discussed earlier as far as the rec centers and things of that nature. Also with our rec centers, and I brought it up in the earlier meeting, is that what we need to do is provide quality rec centers. Right now, we have really beat-up facilities. If you go to Cavalier Manor, you're slipping on the floor, same with the Omri. And some of our other facilities as well. So, you know, there are things on the table. What we need from citizens is to continue to speak about those things that's on the table. We have what we call opera funds, that we're trying to figure out what we're gonna do. And we need you guys to direct us of what we need to do with those things. And we all know crime is a high priority. As somebody who lost a-toe-ve-yo cousin a couple of years ago, the day before I was going to be sworn in to the school board, I understand how important it is to deal with this youth violence, and I understand the hurt that comes from it. So we really have to address that issue. But we also have to make sure that our children, when they get into those rec centers, they're not just going into junk, they're going into something quality. And that's what we need to address in this city. And there was also somebody who talked about, and I know you mentioned about the casinos as well, about poverty in the casinos. Well, some of the people who spoke about the poverty being an issue also voted against the casino. So I wanted to make people aware of that. That casino, in my opinion, was the worst deal ever. And it was also a question asked about how many murders do we have in the city? Do we know that answer for this year?
Yes, I'm sure we have a count.
So in the next meeting, can we get that update? And unfortunately, is a normal thing in the city, the update to include whatever happens from now to the next meeting? And also, as far as, I know we had funds in the opera funds regarding the organizations. Was that to include LLCs too, or just nonprofits?
The final hasn't been determined in terms of the criteria.
Okay, and to go with the question about, see, that's why you gotta go through everything that everybody said. One of our residents asked about the city attorney position. I'm ready to move forward. We really didn't get a real update of what we're gonna go at a couple of meetings ago when we discussed it in the private section. But if it's no objective for council, I would like for us to go forward with the hiring of the city manager position and start the interview process. I mean, city attorney, that's a city manager. I'm sorry. My bad.
Part of, if I could add to that, part of what we haven't discussed yet, which was the process of that, that was what we still needed to discuss. So we can discuss that at the next meeting, what the process was, because we did not discuss the process.
Well, I think we had, kind of did discuss the process, because we chose the people. We sent in, what was, three people of who we, five of who we wanted to interview. So I thought the purpose of that was to move on to start interviewing people.
No, the purpose of that was to identify the people. And then from identifying the people, we were going to move on with the criteria and the process. We hadn't done that. The last meeting, we were going to talk about it, but we did not take an opportunity to do that because we ran short on time. So we're open to whatever process we want to move forward with, but that is where we are in the process.
But just to let you know, ma'am, I didn't cut you off. But again, the email that we sent and what we have is regarding the actual picking the people to move on to interview. That's what the email said when it's sent about those five. But I think that concludes all my responses. And I just want to let you guys know, I know Mr. Taylor, you kind of was asking a direct question, but it wasn't a response because we were, at least I was trying to be a team player. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from my colleagues on council? Want to thank everyone for coming to this council meeting tonight and giving your input. If there are no additional business for our consideration, this meeting is adjourned. Stay safe and healthy.